My beautiful name that my father gave me is Kisero Junior, Kenya D O T N. I'm the Secretary General of Kenya Methodist University. And I have a few things to put across, Your Excellency. First, when I entered this hall, I like checking where I am. I saw from whatever is written here, hashtag fee has fallen. Your Excellency, the fee has not fallen, that's why we are here. So, and first thing first, Mr. President, I've been privileged to be under your administration in two capacities. One, I enjoyed your administration when you were an MP in Eldoret Not. Yeah, we used to learn Apokama Good Apochini Karibuna Queen. And secondly, I've also experienced your leadership now that you are the president. Mr. President, I can assure you, they are totally different. From when you were MP, people used to go to the street to celebrate your achievements. Nowadays, we just go to the streets to demonstrate. And, Mr. President, don't get me wrong, in the first place. The reason is why I know when you are the president, it comes with a lot of responsibility and people to advise. And I will start off by saying, those who advised in this new funding model, I will not be wrong to say there is a problem. And that's why we are here, we have to go back to the drawing board, we have to start off afresh. And my question is, Mr. President, the first question is, what was so wrong with the old funding model that we could not sit down and amend it? Because even a constitution of a country, you just don't wake up one day and bring a new constitution. We always go and say, we go to the parliament, they amend it, and they take it to the president to ascend and sign it. So I feel we should go back to the old funding model and amend it. Because, Mr. President, we don't like, we don't lack stakeholders, we don't lack resources. These people sitting here, what were Nafanya Law, Nursing, Medicine, there are brains here which can sit down in those panel and say, where did we go wrong? First, I want to acknowledge that the new funding model has got good ideas, very brilliant ideas, but the implementation is very wrong and it's not pleasing based on the fact that there are also challenges from the help. You know, when comrades sit in the same room with the help guys, it's a miracle. But we are very happy to sit down with them and discuss, in your presence. Mr. President, I want to also talk about, I come from Kemo, which is a private university. And my question there is in, you have spoken, I've understood what you have said in regards to scholarship and the loans. Comrades, you know, I have my president here, Masai Chabet. You know comrades come to you and tell you, Kisero, we have been placed in this band, and people are really suffering, Mr. President. And my question is, why then do coops have to place them in private universities if they can't be sustained the same way as goes in public universities? And in that regard, Mr. President, I acknowledge that you have said the government... This is my chance with the Mr. President. You have acknowledged that the government said it has debts. And my university is one that is in the same category. To nadai the government, there have been so lenient enough to allow students to learn with the limited resources they have. To naomba twata kidogo in the university and like Kfanyakazi. Because we need to learn, those who are there in Kemo. Then, Mr. President, one, recently you were awarded a beautiful degree at Baraton University, if I'm not wrong. Honorary? Degree at Baraton University. And there was one picture that really took my attention, I know most of you saw the picture. There was a little girl called Naomi, who was in the midst of graduate, and was there admiring all the graduates, the beautiful gown. Then I asked myself, why does this new funding model want to kill the dream of that young girl? Of wanting to graduate? I want to say this, Mr. President. As the commander, I first started by saying, I acknowledge your presence as the fifth president and the commander in chief of our defence forces. And one of your roles in that regard is to act. Please act, Mr. President, we beg you. Please act. Then lastly, lastly, Mr. President. We don't have to go to the street when we can resolve this thing here today. Because we also don't like going to the streets when we can solve things at the table. We are ready to be part of the discussion, we are ready to listen, we are ready to work and ensure that we change this. But the bottom line remains, let's go to the old funding model, amend it to what you wanted to achieve with the new funding model. Thank you so much, God bless you.
It is true, I mean, it is a fact that it doesn't cost the same to teach one course as against the other. And this funding model is sensitive to that. It is also sensitive to students who come from vulnerable families. I know I have been accused correctly that I sometimes think too much about poor people. And I push, you know, the rich people to do things for the poor ones. But I mean, that is society. You know, you, I don't know how to put it, but anyway, that is, that's that. So, you have just told me, Junior, that among the universities that we owe a lot of money is Kemo, your university, right? Do you know why we owe Kemo a lot of money? It's because of the old model, which you are telling me, let us go back to the old model. How will Kemo get out of the hole? If we continue with the old model, it means Kemo continues to accumulate debt. You know, friend, let us, let us deal with this as openly, as transparently as possible. Let us look at this model again. If there is any improvements we can make, if the student body can come up with improvements, let us subject it to scientific evidence, and let us see how we can improve on it. The improvement is what we are doing, we are improving on the model that was, to make it better.
I'm Vincent Tarus, the president of Moi University, and I'm also a finalist doing medicine and surgery. Okay, thank you so much. Number one, Mr. President, I'm really not happy at how we were discussing figures of expensive courses. Yes, it's true that the government is paying a lot for students doing the expensive courses. But you also have to look at it from the student's side. And these are the figures, let me, this is, I'm going to use figures for a student doing dentistry. And of course, with these figures, you could estimate those who are doing medicine, engineering, and all those expensive courses. A student in band one, the one who is very vulnerable, is going to pay 39,000 shillings. Remember that at the moment, we are paying less than that. We are paying 32,000, 33, up to 40. And now, a student in band one is going to pay 39,000. My cue, the conception of the new funding model is on the basis of assisting the poor. Number two, a student in band two is going to pay 78,000 shillings. A student in band three is going to pay 156,000. A student in band four is going to pay 234,000. And a student in band five, 312,000. Now, already we can see and have the impression that expensive courses, or rather, the courses that are expensive to offer will only be for the rich. Because we can all agree that our students in band two, band one, band three, and band four, they are all poor. Now, who are going to afford these courses? Mr. President, when we had a meeting at State House, you said that you're going to put a ceiling over which the vulnerable are going to pay. Yes, that is only going to sort the those who are in band one. I'm assuming it will be way less than 39,000. Now, we have sorted those ones, what about the majority? Because, Mr. President, the majority of students are in band four with a figure of 47%. If I can use figures of last year's group. These are the figures I got from Help, that of 113,000 students who applied, 47% are in band four. And I can use as a case in my school, Mr. President. We have students who, up to now, they were just allowed to do the exam without paying fees. But really, really, the truth is, they won't be able to pay these fees come end of year examinations. And what will be the fate of schools that we are so much trying to salvage? We are going to have so many dropouts, Mr. President. And these figures I'm using is for the School of Dentistry. Now, we have the School of Engineering and the School of Medicine, the School of Nursing. I thank you professor for the figures, but the figures are too high. And this dream is only going to be for the rich. Now, Mr. President, because we value consultation, I'm going to propose an affirmative action, that we have to scrap off the idea that these courses are for the rich. If these courses were for the rich, Mr. President, I don't think you'd be standing there where you are right now. And I don't think all these dignitaries would be seated there where they are right now if these courses were for the rich. Now, allow me to propose an affirmative action, that we give more scholarship to these courses so that everyone can be able to afford. The children of the peace and farmers, the children of the poor, the mamboga that this administration was built in, allow us to have something. Allow them an ability to dream of these courses and pursue them. The issue of loans, Mr. President, that has been spoken about enough. The reason why we are rejecting this new funding model, Mr. President, is because we feel the burden of loans on our backs at the moment. I could only imagine those who would join after us and the generations to come. Yes, you said, Mr. President, that it is better to have loans and educate than not having loans and educated, and not having loans and non-educated. But those are not the two options that you have, Mr. President. We can have a discussion of how we can balance both so that we can come up with a system that values everyone, a system that accommodates everyone. And until then, Mr. President, allow me to reject this new funding model respectfully.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tarus. I don't know, let me answer those questions, I think they are quite a buffet.
Mr. President, I've been given one last concern. Okay, it reads, is, okay, the issue of student independence and admin stepping on student leaders. I think this is addressed to all our vice chancellors, the management of our schools. Kindly allow student leaders to run the activities with the autonomy that they deserve, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tarus. Let me start with Munguezi from Moranga University. I think, yeah. She suggested that, how do we, why don't we consolidate all basaris? The ones for the MCA, Member of Parliament, Women Rep, Governor. Somebody suggested that I have some basari, I don't have. Just for the record, I don't have any basari kitty. In fact, when I was Minister for Higher Education, there was a basari at the ministry. And that basari used to benefit people who have connection. The CEO of Help then knows, I said that basari should be transferred. It used to be 100 million shillings every year. I said that basari should be transferred to Higher Education Loans Board. In fact, it is the money that began the capitation and scholarship for our private institutions. I agree with you that it's a positive proposition. It is something that we need to have a conversation about. It is something that I will engage governors about. Because in our constitution, it is the counties. Once money has been given to the counties, I have no authority as president to decide for the counties. But I think a national conversation that consolidates all these basaris and then we see how far it can go towards making our education affordable is a very positive conversation. I am ready to engage in that conversation and provide leadership in that conversation. My good friend Gishangi from JK Watt has asked me, why the rush? I am tempted to say that, I mean, if the situation our universities were in is not serious to warrant us to have this conversation. And by the way, it took six months to eight months of a conversation with different professionals. It was not something that it was over a one night, or a weekend, or a week. It is something that was very clearly thought out. And you said something like, we make promises that we never keep. Let me tell you, this is one commitment I made. The universities are here, the vice chancellors are here, they can tell you, the commitments I made on this model were delivered last year and it is making a difference in our universities. That is the reality. You did say that corruption is a big problem, and I agree with you 100%. Corruption is a big problem. And I want to thank the university leadership. Because part of the corruption that has been going on is on even the money that we give to universities. We decided that we are going to be, to go using technology. I'm very happy that the university leaders accepted that we use technology. Unfortunately, our secondary schools and primary schools took us to court. They still want to deal in cash. And I know we lose a lot of money there. Corruption is something we must deal with it firmly. I have made proposals on what we should do as a nation. I have had conversations with the Chief Justice. I have had conversations with the leadership of Parliament on what we need to do on legislation to make sure that we deal with corruption. But we can also, corruption is not just about jailing people. It is about putting systems in place that makes sure that corruption doesn't happen. And one of them is to use technology to make sure that we are sure of what we are doing. And that is what this whole system and what we are doing with Help and what we are doing with coops and what we are doing with our universities is all about. I have made it very clear, now I have asked sometimes, sometimes we investigate an incident or a corruption case. And people rush to court and we are given an order, you cannot investigate so and so. We have situations where we have been told, you cannot charge so and so. They've gone to court and obtained an order. We must deal, we must interrogate corruption so that we make, we make sure that we deal with it from all angles.
I'm Court Secretary General, and, Mr. President, for the entire time I was sitting on this seat, it was becoming hotter and hotter for the simple reason that by every minute I'm receiving phone calls. Because before I came here, I engaged my people from JK Watt and they told me, if I did not tell you the truth, they would impeach me. So allow me to be as candid with you as possible. Mr. President, my first question and one of the biggest questions my people have been asking me is why the rush? Why the rush in implementing a model that has a lot of technicalities? Why the rush? Because I am a financial engineer and as you have said, the issue of the interest rates is determined by actual scientists. But the model in itself has a lot of issues up to this moment. So even if we had all these issues coupled together, you've given a lot of sad stories of people not making it to campus of campuses such as the Scott Bible Institute being closed. But, Mr. President, we have a lot of people being affected right now. While we were at Naivasha, Mr. President, once we left, we felt like rubber stamps. Nongeukweli comrades. For the simple reason that after that, a report was given in Naivasha, we had a summit in Naivasha around June. And the report that came out is that we had agreed to the model. And our comrades were really angry with us, Mr. President. So we felt at that point like we are being set up. Like what you are telling the people is just for formalities. And we have spoken in a lot of forums, Mr. President, but I believe you have already noticed that people are not clapping much to even the best of points. Because there's a general tiresome, there's a general exhaustion among the people. Because you are usually given a lot of promises, we will come to forums such as this, but you know that very little of it will be implemented. And, Mr. President, we also know that corruption is the biggest public expenditure. And before you came into office, there were people you came into office with who had corruption scandals. But once they got into office, they became suddenly people of integrity. And, Mr. President, inasmuch as we are discussing education, we know that the Help decries of the, you've even told us, and it's also something I take issue with, while we were with you at State House, you told us that the debt was around 70 billion or... There was a time you told us 70 billion, a time came you told us private universities have 51 billion, and today you said 180 billion. And as a financial engineer, I'm finding it a little bit hard to reconcile all these figures, Mr. President. So you could also state it a bit more clearly over that. But the Help and the PS of education has told us severely that the, that the public institutions had debts and all such kinds of stuff. But we have seen exposes on Twitter, exposes by the Auditor General telling us that a chair somewhere costs 3.3 million, Mr. President. I will not rush to criticize anything of the sort, but you know that corruption is a big expenditure in this country. What is your administration doing to ensure that corruption ends in public institutions? Mr. President, we, or you are using nine betas to classify people. Once again, I'm a financial engineer and I take keen interest in numbers. You use nine factors to classify people. Now explain this to me, we have a parent earning 25,000 shillings. And the first born has made it to JK Watt to do financial engineering. But this family has seven people. It has six siblings under the person who has made it to financial engineering. So, under what category does this person fall? Let's even say it's 50,000. This person lives in the CBD at a place where their life is very expensive. So, under what category does this person fall? Or will we have the same, the same thing repeating itself of that girl who was looking at the people with graduation counts? Because the first born years made it to campus and they found the new funding model and they appealed because they were placed in band five. But unfortunately, as you've heard, we have, let me confirm the numbers, we have 26,000 appeals. And also as a financial engineer, I know that not all appeals usually go through as they ought to because of the system glitches. Mr. President, kindly explain to me where this person should land? Because among the nine betas, the issue of the siblings and probably the dependents around that family, because some of these families adopt people not because they have too much, but because they have compassion on the people in the society who the government is unable or unwilling to help. Mr. President, we also have the issue of a defunct kuso. And, Mr. President, I love what the gentleman who was spoken in Swahili, I must first commend him because of the perfect grammar, of the issue of, we, I do not know if you know anyone who represent other campus students. Because comrades, do you know anyone who represents you? Do you have anyone? So, Mr. President, I would like to urge you to probably constitute something that will even be recognized by the government. Because as students, you have been crying, as student leaders, you have been crying for a very long time of people who are there to just buy themselves cars, Mr. President. People who are there not to represent our will, who are there not to represent our will, but they are on. People who are there for their own stomachs. And these are the people who are striking against. Mr. President, people in this room are angry because of two people. One, it is you, I've told you I'll be impeached if I do not tell you the truth. My constituents told me that they feel, and I will put this as respectfully as possible that you advise your advisers, because of the issues, for example, let's put it, let's put it, let's say the issue of the new funding model. Mr. President, the only person who has explained the new funding model in the best way is you. So, my constituents were asking me, as in, should the people in charge of that ministry be able to put it better than the president himself? The other person that the comrades are very angry with is in this room, seated somewhere in front, Mr. President. Somebody who has been claiming to represent our interests. But comrades, does that person represent your interests? Does that person represent your interests? So, Mr. President, if anyone comes to you claiming, Mr. President... The comrades are telling me to tell him to walk out, but we are here for peace, Mr. President. So, I would want to put it as straight as possible and to be as brief as a coconut hand. Mr. President, as things stand, we do not have a representative. We do not have a representative unless you enable us have some permanent office to ensure that student leaders are represented and you ensure that unlike the many government offices we have today, the government will not interfere with the affairs of the students. Mr. President, the lady there has raised an important issue. First, the questions that are here, most of them have been raised by the people around me because they've realized that you might not have a lot of time to speak. that you might not have a lot of time to speak. Somebody named Karongo Adangwa, the Senator of Kiambu County, and by the way, God willing, will replace him, raised the point of all this money is being brought to one pool. The M C has a basari. The Woman Rep has a basari. Probably, if it was not for a very little chance, the chief might be having a basari. Mister President, the entire structure that represents us and by the way, you also feel overrepresented as Kenyans. And that is one of the reasons we are demonstrating, Mister President. We have twenty-two CSS, we have CAS, we have permanent secretaries. And all these people have budgets and they have salaries. But I'll put that aside, Mister President. So these people have basaris. And then, to get a basari, you must know somebody in the country that we live in. You've said that you feel for the poor. You've said that you are blamed for feeling for the poor and somebody opined that we are all politicians and we all got elected through public relations. So Mister President, if you really feel for the poor, kindly address that issue. We have been with you in several forums and you've said that you are not afraid to buy the bullet, to take the bull by its horns. Mister President, the MPs will disturb you. Just a minute. I've been sent by a lot of people. You have cut my time a lot of times. So Mister President, this MP's will bring a lot of issues. Somebody said that once you remove the CDF, people will not be vying for these positions because they go there for their stomachs. Ukwele yamowango. Mister President, kindly consider that because that will be a legacy. And actually, if you are able to do that, Mister President, in twenty-twenty-seven, I will personally have no issue electing you. So Mister President, address that issue. And finally, Mister President, I feel like there are a lot of discrepancies in the numbers that you are being given. For example, you've said that the professor from Alupe, who proposed the new funding model, has spoken about the person doing teaching, the other one doing law, the other one doing medicine, paying the same fee. But we are student leaders here and we are students. Is that the truth? No, no, no. Under the differentiated unit costing, does a teacher pay the same amount as a doctor? So Mister President, we kindly ask that such small things be reconciled because these are the things that make people strike. Probably, Naivasha, the HELP did a lot of good work. But as I said in the newspaper yesterday, the Daily Nation, you could go through it. I said that you might be doing a lot of good work, but your communication team is very bad. So Mister President, for the little good work that you do, ensure that you know. And last but not least, there are students who differ. And also, help me on this issue. We have students who deferred in twenty-twenty-two, but they have come back right now. I feel that it will be very unfair for these students to be classified under the new funding model, Mister President. And they are a lot. And they have sent me with their cries, Mister President. So I stand here as a representative of my people. Kindly address those concerns.
Thank you. Your Excellency, I have a few concerns concerning the new funding model and a few things related to the university, I mean, higher education funding. And I'll start right away by... Yeah, talking about the students, who do they intra-school transfer? You know, once comrades, I mean, the Form 4s, or a student is done with the Form 4 education and therefore the COOPS portal is open for application of the courses and the universities, they are not aware of which courses. They are not aware of maybe which courses to apply for. And therefore, they opt for any course. And they believe that on reporting to that university after the placement, they'll get to change their courses. But now, this has become a problem. Because on changing the programs, the funding, I don't know, the funding board or the government, an example of the three-hundred students in Point University who transferred their courses and therefore, up to now, their fee has never reflected. And I have a problem with... Why should the entire cost of the program reflect in a student's portal instead of the household obligation? I mean, the household contribution? Now, you get... We get to know that the government, due to failure to release the funds to the universities, these students are not able to do their exams. These students cannot access the university services. These students are held back from enjoying the privileges of the university just as other students. I'd really love to hear you respond to that. Secondly, in Naivasha with the P S, though she gave you a contrary opinion or conclusion, she told you that we agreed to everything and we said that the model is really working, which was not true. Actually, we told her that for this model, if we have to stick to the new funding model, let us do away with band four and band five. Because these are the problematic bands. The bands that are creating so many problems to the parents. In Point University, last week, we had students joining and majority of them came with their parents. So you find that we are helping in the admission process. And the parent is coming thinking that I'm part of the administrators, crying that, oh, my student is placed in band four. I earn, like, my net worth is zero. What should I do? Now, na doa ma chozi. Really, Mister President, I thought this government is for mamboga and mutia boda boda. So what do we do to search or rather to help search parents and students? Number three, you said that if students can propose better ideas to make this model work, then I'm a social scientist, I can offer one. Now that my colleague, my wise colleague there said that we have so many basari kits in different dockets, starting from the MCA up to the presidential, your office also has a basari. I don't know if that is true, but you know it yourself. So if we can constitute it into one kit and make education completely free or reduce the cost of programs, that will be very appropriate and this model will work. Number two, I asked myself, now, who sits back and decides that now this program is going to cost this much? Who? I think the Vice Chancellor and you know better. Do we have a fixed figure that should be like, ye lazima tu, the cost of the program, for example, medicine should cost this much? See, we can reduce, right? So if we have a reduced cost of program and let's say, for example, you have those, maybe the impossibility of band four and five being done away with, now we have band one, two, to five. We have students in band one paying nothing, band two paying nothing, band three paying something, band four paying something a little more than those in band three and band five paying the... That way, this model will work. Mister President, I can assure you. Thirdly, we've talked about the corruption in the institutions. We have, like, this seat. Mtoaki komba ya, this seat costs a million. That's crazy. We have this thing called procurement, act of procurement, something. Like, each and everything has to be procured. We have those procurement offices. Those are the sources of corruption. Mister President, if you have to do something, then start with doing away with those offices. How the hell can we have a seat here costing a million when we know the actual price? So can we have the procurement act done away with? Thank you, Mister President.